Thank you, I've got apologies from councillors Hillary Kelvert and Erin Hawkins, and from, sorry, apologies for talking over there. Do you get it, those in favour?
Aye.
Yes, carried. Can I move the confirmation of the agenda, please, to have a second of that, thank you, councillor Wilson? Any debate? Pardon, councillor Staines, a second. Then I'll move that. Those in favour?
Aye.
Against, carried. The usual reminder with regard to declaration of interest. And we'll move then to the interim financial result. And I'll grant to make any general comments first.
Right, thank you.
Richard?
So, basically, these are the interim results for the first or for the 12 months ended 30th of June. These will differ from the annual counts in two main factors, as one, there will be some final adjustments that need to be made, whether that's us tightening up a few things or audit changes that will be filed by the council. And the second thing is that we report against the original budget for our annual accounts as opposed to the adjusted budget which we're reporting against here. So, overall, for the year, the surplus was 3.164 million. This was 3.8 million higher than budget. That was basically due to interest savings, depreciation being less than budget, the Waikori Fund performing better, and other savings across council. And they were partially offset by the reduction in external revenue and grants. Operating cash flow for the year was ahead of budget by $3 million at 51 million. And investing cash flow was $20 million better than budget because we didn't spend as much on capital expenditure as planned. So, basically, that has meant that there's been a reduction in debt for the year of about 5.486 million, and that's the first decrease since 2002/3, apart from the year we shifted the stadium debt out. And I'll take any questions if there are any.
What, questions? Councillor Vandemus?
On page 420, it says, under debt, attachment six provides a summary of the debt servicing ratios. If you go to 4.9, attachment six there seems to be a CapEx summary.
So, it's actually attachment seven. That shows the borrowing investment policy ratios.
Okay, so it should be seven then?
Yes.
Right. And then the reference to attachment seven should be eight, is that right?
Uh, what?
Because attachment seven doesn't make sense either. Attachment seven is the public debt statement which shows council's debt by activity, that's actually attachment eight then, is it?
Yes, correct.
Okay. When it says that the Needden Centre capital was favourable by 100k, the project closed to final completion and budget savings of 1.2 million had been realised. The budget savings on the Needden Centre, is that the difference between the 45 million that was budgeted and the 42.5 that was finalised?
Pass, I don't know what the total project cost was for that particular project, sorry. I'll just check to see if one of the staff members do.
Through you, Mr Chair. The 1.2 was savings from the budget. When you say original, was that?
45 million?
45 million.
And it came in at 42.5?
Yeah. I will need to check that, but I think that that's correct.
You think that's it? Okay. In that case, I would like to ask why it is that this, that it says here that a saving has been realised, when in fact what we had was a significant loss of what was originally proposed. The original budget included a complete rebuilding of the Glenroy, a completely new entrance way, and completely new breakout space. None of those things happened. Most of those things would have accounted for the $45 million cost, they still managed to spend 42.5 million. How can that possibly be presented here as a budget saving?
I'm happy to allow staff to answer that, but you're asking a question not about budget versus actual, but about original project versus completed project, and they're not the same, thankfully, so you're being a bit mischievous.
No, I'm not being mischievous at all, with respect, I'm asking how you can categorise budget savings, when in fact what the ratepayer got was no makeover of the Glenroy, no new entrance way, and no new breakout space, which was all budgeted for. How can that possibly be a budget saving?
Well, all I can comment on is the budget for the project would have been approved by council, and the scope for the project would have been approved by council at that time. Whether there was early discussions about what could be achieved with the money, I cannot comment on at this stage, because I'm not familiar with it, sorry.
You're not aware what the original budget was?
No, I wasn't.
For?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, on page, on a different subject then, on page 4.17, personnel costs. We've got an actual 46 million, budget 45 million, unfavourable variance 30, 382k. It says here on the top of 1.1, 4.17, pardon me, I'm a bit dyslexic. The unfavourable variance has been due to superannuation being higher than budget. My first question is, how can superannuation be higher than budget? I mean, you know what that is, don't you?
Very easily, more people can take up superannuation, it's not compulsory in New Zealand, and the contribution rate increased during the year from 2% to 3%.
Oh, so more people decided to take it up?
So, a combination of both of those.
Okay, all right. And additional costs associated with end-of-service payments. Is this basically, these additional costs with end-of-service payments, are these people that have resigned?
Correct.
Okay, and up to what date would this be?
Well, these accounts are to 30th of June, so up to that date.
Okay, 30th of June. Thanks very much for that. So, I may have had another question, but I've forgotten what it is, so I may come back.
Councillor McTavish?
Thank you, just a couple of questions. In relation to the lighting upgrade project, which we budgeted for in last, the last financial, well, this financial year it's being reported on, and I know that it hasn't proceeded. Given that, the sooner we do that, the better in terms of our, the savings that we'll be making, is that being progressed at the moment?
I can't answer that question, I'm not familiar with the project, and I don't know where it's at, sorry.
Okay, well, I don't know whose chairmanship it sits under, but I think one of us probably needs to follow up on it. In relation to the report, I really appreciated the inclusion of the rates and the rates and arrears and the rate owing information. Is it, do you have a comment, Miss Grant, on, in terms of rates and arrears, we've done better this, this past financial year than the year previous? How significant is that percentage, noting it's something like point, less than point six, point four or something, which narrows down over time? And was there anything done differently in the 2014 financial year than there was, and sorry, in the 2014 rating year than there was in the 2013 rating year, that might have made or resulted in people paying up earlier?
Unfortunately, I can't comment on what happened in 2013.
Yeah.
All I can say for the 2014 year is that I met regularly with the rating staff, or the senior staff, and we go through the overdue rates, and we've gone into a process of chasing those up. I believe that's very similar to what's been done in the past as well, so I don't think there's anything significantly different.
Yeah. And in relation to the debt, the net debt situation, which I think this is a moment that we all need to be celebrating. On 4.2, it is reported that this is the first year that this council's debt has been, has decreased since 2002/3, with the exception of the 2010/11 financial year. Now, last, at the last meeting of this committee, it was pointed out by the chair when I tried to get excited about it, but this is just a snapshot in time. But do you have any comment about the extent to which this does demonstrate a trend, and the extent to which we can expect to see this following, flowing through into this financial year that we're currently in now?
Council's given a very clear indication that it wants to reduce its level of debt, and we're trying to achieve that as much as possible. Unfortunately, our forecast says it's going to increase slightly for this current financial year, but that is mainly due to the fact that we have to allow for those carryforwards flowing through into the next financial year. If we have a similar situation like we have this year, where we have approximately $20 million worth of carryforwards, we should continue to see debt continue to decrease, unless something extraordinary happens that I'm not aware of.
And in terms of the carryforwards that are signalled, which is, they are quite substantial in this financial year, is that something that we need to be concerned about as a council, given the implications that it does have for things like debt management, as we head into our LTP discussions?
So, I guess the issue there is that for a lot of large capital projects, you often have carryforwards, because it tends to take longer to complete a job than most people anticipate. So, it's fairly common, I guess, one of the focuses that I'm trying to bring is that we need to improve our forecasting and make it more realistic at times, so that we don't have to have funds available when we're not actually necessarily required.
So, we might see that, some more, some greater realism around planning as we head into the LTP?
Any year, whether it's long-term plan or annual plan, it should be the same.
Thank you.
Can I just create this relative to that point? If we look at the underspend, capital underspend in the current year, it's about 9 million, but we're carrying forward about, because I've lost the figure now, is it 16 million or something, 20 million? There's quite a difference between the underspend in the current year versus what we're carrying forward, is that representative of the fact that we're carrying forward actually money from two years ago?
No, because the budget gets changed for last year, so effectively what, the problem you've got is that when these accounts were produced, after that we approved them all carryforwards, and some of that is in the 8.963 million variance.
Right.
So, in total, we're carrying forward just, just over $19 million, 19.2 million, which is effectively the delays in either the capital operating projects. The vast majority is capital.
Councillor Vandemus?
You say that there are effectively delays, but on 420 again, under the Needden Centre, this 1.2 million which claims to have been saved, it's an unspent budget, I'll ground that, but it says it will, it will be carried forward. Now, the Needden Centre was finished a year ago now, at least. Why are we carrying forward that when the project's finished? And, and what is that carryforward going to be used for?
Oh, I'll just, yeah, renuke a tance, that one.
The carryforward that was approved, I've just got it here, of the Needden Centre was 64,000 that you approved at council meeting. This was, 34 was required to replace cracked paving outside Glenroy, and 30,000 was for access to ceiling space for operating the setup lighting. So, there was some health and safety issues that still had to be sorted out.
But it says here that 1.2 million is an unspent budget that's going to be carried forward?
1.2 isn't unspent, carried forward, but 1.2 million was the savings. This 100,000, sorry, 64,000 will be carried forward for some work.
One issue you have is that this report, because it's June report, was written before the carryforwards were finalised.
Right.
So, 64,000 has been carried forward, so effectively the rest is savings.
So, what's happened to the 1.2 million then? You're saying that most of that is savings?
Savings, correct.
And 100k of it?
64,000.
Sixty, okay, so the favourable 100k, what does that refer to?
I don't know, sorry.
The 64, the 100k was what, at the, when we did the report, 30th of June, that was what was the savings that was left over, and we needed it to do some of the work like the paving. So, only 64,000 has been carried forward from that 100,000. The 1.2 million has already, was already accounted for and included as a saving when we did the 14, 15 budgets.
Okay, so you're saying that a year after the event, we're still spending $64,000 on things like paving?
Yeah, I think that, that happened, the work was done, I think, in a hurry to get it ready for completion, and so there was some problem with the paving.
Okay. All right, thanks very much for that. Just while you're there, you may know, I'm not sure, on page 4.19, it talks about the unavailability of lighting equipment, including halogen lamps. I was hoping that we weren't sort of buying halogen lamps anymore, we're doing LEDs, but I'm, given that this is a different department, traffic service renewals, can you confirm whether it is actually halogen lamps that we're still putting in, and if so, why? Well, maybe this is something, someone can come back?
Can I get back?
Yeah, if you can get back to me on that, that'd be great. And the other, the other issue, net debt level. It's encouraging to see that this is the first year that the debt has decreased. But we were told, yeah, well, either or, we were told that in 2012, that debt had peaked, and then we were told again in 2013 that debt had peaked. We're now told that it has actually peaked and it's now decreasing. Does this actually mean anything, given that we have, for instance, a situation where we're no longer going to be getting the dividends from DCHL, that Aurora has to spend $139 on deferred maintenance, 139 million on deferred maintenance? Does this actually have any significance, given that we have all this other negative major impacts coming for our debt situation?
So, I guess the first question I'd say is that, well, debt has actually dropped in this last financial year, so.
Our debt?
Correct.
DCC?
Yes, we're only talking about DCC.
Yeah.
This is a DCC report, not a group report.
Yeah.
I don't think it's appropriate that we comment at this stage about what Aurora's plans are, because you know them as well as I do.
Well, we've been told that they have to spend $139 million on new assets.
But they're not necessarily new assets.
No, no.
A renewal of assets.
They're deferred maintenance mostly, and that they won't be able to give us the dividends to pay for the interest on the stadium.
So, no, so, no, that's incorrect. So, Aurora has indicated that its dividend will drop to the city from nine and a half million to seven and a half million. That's what their statement of debt shows.
There's a point of order here, Mr Chair, this has got pretty nothing to do with this report. I've been hoping somebody might suggest that, but as the question's being asked and answered, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Councillor Lloyd?
Yeah, I just had a question on 415. City blue revenue was about 190k due to cap rate of appreciation. Is any of that depreciation problematic?
The appreciation recovered there is for those vehicles that were sold for water and waste.
Yeah, so only those vehicles?
Yes. So, there has been a write-off on these accounts of other vehicles set.
The other question I had was on 418, and I just don't understand it, so I just wanted to maybe it's beyond you to explain. So, offsetting the overall favorable variance was unbudgeted refund of 50% of fees to the New Zealand Police of 134k, and I just wondered, how does that work?
I had to find out myself, actually. So, basically, we're required to give 50% of the fees that we receive for expired licences and warranted fitnesses to the police.
So, expired offices?
So, you know, your warranty fitness or your registration, if they've expired, we have to give 50% of that revenue to the police.
Do we give tickets for that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you only do that for cows that are, when you're giving them back?
If you let us know your address and you haven't got one, we can come out and see you.
Ask around as well.
And it'll help, and it's in his pockets. So, if we find someone that we think we need to take out, fine.
Yes.
Councillor Wilson?
Just noting your reservations about the interim nature of this report, I'm just wondering whether the wording for the recommendation, which I'm happy to put if it's changed, should have the words interim financial performance and interim financial position on it, that we should note that they're interim as much as anything?
Yeah, I think it should, correct.
Yes.
So, we will amend that when we come to actually.
Well, I'm happy to move it, we just take it.
Right, well, we'll get there in a second. Are there any other questions? Grant, I've just got a few. Oh, one's a comment really, but I'll slip it in while councillor Buzet's not looking. The, the cow's brought 3 million, which came in this financial year, it's a loan effectively increases our loan balance by 3 million, when in fact that's, it's really offset via, it's a short term, it's offset via liability, so I just point that out, that the, without that arrangement, where the cost of that debt has been covered by the arrangement, we would be $3 million better off. On page 418, legal fees were large sum unfavourable, but it strikes me that a significant portion of that amount is around a similarity of kind of purpose, really, it's around, and I guess it begs the question of to what extent we've given consideration in the past, or should be again, to in-house legal services. I'm here seeing nods over there, suggesting that it might be happening. Okay, well, that's reassuring, because whilst I'm always happy to help city businesses, if we could do it ourselves, that would be a wonderful thing. And page, oh, page 425, the, the staff costs in libraries unfavourable, 232k, which is a significant sum. What, what's driven that, and is that something that we should be concerned about going forward?
So, there's a combination of things here, there's been the RFID project, which has meant they've had to, the way we account for that is we incur the costs and then transfer it out as an internal grant to capitalise it. So, that's about 70-odd, 72,000. Superannuation costs, which councillor Vandemus alluded to earlier, we've got 35,000k unfavourable. There's some year-end adjustments, which always has an impact, and there was a bit of a, well, there was an era in the casual salaries, which was not quite high enough. Savings wouldn't be made, the savings weren't made as anticipated in the casual area.
And have we, is that under control for the company?
Yes, so the RFID project is, will start to have an impact this year, and the library is also reviewing its staffing levels.
And we're able to capitalise those staffing costs as we go, as opposed to at the end of the project?
Ah, yeah, you do. Well, you capitalise the project when it's available to be used, so.
So, does that mean that there would be, probably a delay, some of what might have been staffing costs associated with it might get capitalised in the next financial year?
Well, they will be capitalised in that, this current financial year, because the project is not complete.
Thank you. So, I have a move with the, Kate, you're moving the recommendation, but with the wording changed to reflect the fact that we are looking at the interim financial accounts, so that the finance committee knows the financial performance for the period ended 30th of June, check in, according to the interim financial performance, and then the same word interim.
Yep. Thank you.
Second, councillor Staines? I'll open it up for discussion, is there any discussion? Being done, I'll put the motion, those in favour?
I don't need a writer reply.
My apologies. You're almost too late, councillor Vandemus, it's a good thing I'm in a good mood.
I just thought I'd take the opportunity to compliment staff on the nice colourful graphs. I've always liked graphs, and having them legible and colourful and meaningful is a trend that I like noted, and I've got to put more of them in the future.
Thank you. All right, I'll put the motion, those in, no?
Well, Mr Chair, I just, I wouldn't like staff only to be complimenting on their graphs, I think that noting this is just an interim financial position, I do note that we have favourable variance in asset operations and maintenance costs, material supplies and services, fees and levies, and general admin expenses, and all of those are things which staff have been working really hard to manage favourably for us, and I think that that should be noted, as well as, of course, the fact that this is the first time since 2002, 2003, with the exception of 2010, 2011, that we have been paying off more debt than we have been drawing down. And I think both of those are things we should be complimenting ourselves and staff on.
Yeah, I look in the spirit of that too, I just draw everybody's attention to page 410, where the ratios, these are actually quite important, because whilst they are always only ever a snapshot in time, they are significantly better than budget, and given that in at least one of the three budget was expected to be outside of our parameters, even if only briefly, I think it was for a couple of years, was expected to be outside, those ratios are all back within that, and I think that's something you should welcome. Doesn't mean to say they won't fluctuate a bit from month to month, I expect they will, but as an overall possession, it's certainly a significant improvement. Waited long enough this time, I'll put it, those in favour?
Aye.
Carried, thank you. We move to table five, the financial result for the month of July. Grant, do you want to?
So, obviously, I'll state the obvious, it is for the first month of the year, and we've got a favourable variance of 2.262 million. The vast majority of that comes from the Waikori Fund, which is 1.122 million favourable, which is, long may those equity markets behave, as per the way we hope. And then the rest is basically savings across, savings and expenditure across council, which some of that will be timing. Obviously, the first month of the year is actually quite problematic, there's often a little wrap-up from the prior year as well, so. Apart from that, I'll take any questions if there are any order.
Councillor Lloyd?
Just noticed, actually, I forgot to ask on the last set of accounts as well, but I noticed that the Waikori Fund has been performing at a pretty good level. You put that down, is there something different about the management of the Waikori Fund, or is that just favourable conditions?
Basically, about 90% of a fund's performance is dictated by its asset allocation policy, so the markets have been kind to us in the last, we won't.
It's above the dollar.
The dollar has an impact as well.
Any other questions? I don't do. Thank you. Second?
Yeah, I just want to pick up on councillor McTavish.
Council of Anderes's comments about the, uh, year two, uh, that we've just done, and, and recognise that that was a snapshot of the year, and this is a snapshot of the month, but what is reassuring is that the trend looks like it's remaining positive, and that again is to the credit, um, leaving it up to Waikori result, again to the credit of the staff, they're not letting the pressure off, they're maintaining, uh, the effort, and I think we, uh, they, again, to be complimented on that, because, uh, there have been enough distractions to warrant perhaps being, not having it for on the pedal, but they have, and this is, this is a really good indicative trend result.
Any other comments? Uh, then I'll put the motion to the recommendation, the finance committee notes the financial performance for the period, uh, it's been moved and seconded, those in favour?
Aye.
Against, carried. Okay, uh, we've moved to the Waikori Fund, which has already been commented on, but it's now a bit more dear.
Have you to move?
True, well, I'll note that, are there any questions?
Good.
There being none, it's been moved consecutively, Council of Wilsons, Council of Staines, any comments that anybody wishes to add? How sort of did you want to say?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
And would you like to write a reply?
No, thank you.
So, there being none, um, I'll put the, the, uh, the recommendation that we note the report, those in favour?
Aye.
Against, carried. Um, any matters for, um, notification to the Chair? No, that's easy, um, I'll move for the reasons outlined in the agenda paper that we move into closed session, please, seconded. If those in favour?
Aye.
Against, carried.